Hey, Ken. Do you want to be? I mean, I could move.
Just saying.
It's the first time we've been in person and it's been a while.
Bryce Tracy, are we good to go? Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Just a little bit of housekeeping before I call the meeting to order. For those that are zooming in, if there are multiple people in your household, you should be on two devices. And that way you can... ...for attending tonight's meeting. Just a little bit of housekeeping before I call. That way you can both or however many people in your household so that you can all vote. I'm going to just give everybody a few minutes to get on another device potentially. We have quite a few people in the audience tonight, so this is good. So we'll begin in about three minutes. Sorry for the delay. I just want to give everybody time. Also, if you haven't done it, done so already, please type your name and address in the chat feature so that we can log your presence here tonight. Okay, I'd like to call the special town meeting February 24th, 2021 to order. It is now 7:05. We will begin with the reading of the legal notice by our town clerk, Renee Waldron.
Legal notice, Town of Thompson, notice of special town meeting, February 24th, 2021. Notice of referendum, March 9th, 2021. A special town meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in the town meetings of the Town of Thompson, Connecticut, will be held at the Thompson Public Schools Auditorium, 785 Riverside Drive in North Grovendale, Connecticut, on Wednesday, February 24th, 2021, at 7:00 PM for the purposes stated below. Persons can also participate virtually by video using the following instructions for a Zoom conference. There's the link. The meeting ID is 83556527919, and the passcode is 028293. Participation by telephone is not available because voter qualification cannot be reliably confirmed unless visually identifiable by being in person or on video. Video cannot be muted or voter to qualify, for a voter to qualify to vote. The purpose of the meeting will be, one, to choose a moderator for the meeting; two, to consider and act upon the following resolution: A, to adopt amended ordinance number 10-005 budget; and B, to adopt ordinance number 10-054 referendum notices; C, to adopt ordinance number 10-019, ordinance of annual tax abatement for members of the Thompson Fire Engine Company, Inc., West Thompson Fire Department, Inc., Community Fire Company, Inc., Quinnabog Volunteer Fire Department, Inc., East Thompson Volunteer Fire Department, Inc. To consider, three, to consider and act upon the following resolution: To authorize the issuance of bonds and notes to finance the appropriation of $4,700,000 for costs related to the school roof replacement project at Thompson Public Schools Building, approved at special town meeting held January 8th, 2020, and referendum on January 15th, 2020. To provide that the amount of bonds or notes authorized to be issued shall be reduced by any grants received for the project to authorize the issue temporary, to authorize the issue temporary notes of the town in anticipation of such bonds or notes and grants, and to authorize a majority of the first selectmen and the treasurer to determine the amounts, dates, interest rates, maturities, redemption provisions, form and other details of the bonds or notes, and to perform all other acts which are necessary or appropriate to issue the bonds or notes. B, to take action to allow temporary advances of available funds, which the town reasonably expects will be reimbursed from the proceedings of borrowings, and to authorize a majority of the first selectmen and the treasurer to bind the town pursuant to such representations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption from federal income taxation of interest on the bonds, notes, or temporary notes authorized by the resolution, if issued on a tax exempt basis, including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings to the United States in future years and to make representations and enter into written agreements for the benefit of holders of the bonds or notes to provide secondary market disclosure information, which agreements may include such terms as they deem advisable or appropriate in order to comply with applicable laws or rules pertaining to the sale or purchase of such bonds, notes, or temporary notes. C, to authorize the first selectmen and other proper officers and officials of the town to apply for and accept federal and state grants to help finance the appropriation for the project. Any grant proceeds may be used to pay project cost or principal and interest on bonds, notes, or temporary notes. Indeed, to authorize the first selectmen, the treasurer, the Board of Education, the Town Building Committee for the project, and other officers and officials of the town to take all actions, other actions, which is necessary or desirable to construct and complete the project, to issue bonds, notes, or temporary notes, and to obtain grants to finance the appropriation for the project. Four, pursuant to section 7-7 of the General Statutes of Connecticut, revision of 1958, as amended in ordinance number 10-005 in the form mostly, most recently approved, May 6, 2019, regarding the submission of non-budgetary appropriations to referendum. To adjourn said town meeting at its conclusion and to submit the resolution presented under item 3 to referendum upon voting machines, which vote shall be held on March 9th, 2021, between the hours of 12 noon and 8:00 PM. Electors will vote at the following polling places. District 1, Thompson Public Library, Lewis P. Fosher Community Center, 934 Riverside Drive, North Grovendale. District Number 2, Town Office Building, 815 Riverside Drive, North Grovendale. District Number 3, Quinnabog Fire Department, 720 Quinnabog Road, Quinnabog. District Number 4, East Thompson Fire Department, 530 East Thompson Road, Thompson. Persons qualified to vote in town meetings who are not electors will vote at Town Office Building, 815 Riverside Drive, North Grovendale. Absentee ballots will be available from the town clerk's office. Absentee ballots will be counted at the following central location: Norman Babett Veterans Conference Room, First Floor, Town Office Building, 815 Riverside Drive, North Grovendale. Action on said items at the town meeting will be limited to reasonable discussion only. The aforesaid resolution will be placed on the voting machines under the following heading: Shall the Town of Thompson authorize the issue of bonds and notes to finance the appropriation of $4,700,000 for costs related to the school roof replacement project at the Thompson Public Schools Building, previously approved at referendum, January 15th, 2020? Voters approving the resolution will vote yes, and those opposing said resolution will vote no. Dated at Thompson, Connecticut, this 26th day of January, 2021, your Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Some additional housekeeping items for those that are zooming in. At any time after a motion is made and it's on the floor for discussion, you may unmute yourself, you may raise your hand, use the raise your hand feature, you may use the chat feature and type in your comments. They will be read for you. If you are wanting to speak and you unmute yourself or you type in the chat box, please say your name and your street address so that we can record that. Additionally, when it comes time for the vote, those in the Zoom audience will receive a polling question to answer. So that polling question will come to you and you'll need to choose yes or no on that question. Zoom will automatically tally up the poll and give us the results. With that, I will... Yes, and if you have video, you will need to be on video when you are speaking. And voting. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the first item on the agenda tonight is to choose a moderator for the meeting. Do I have any nominations for moderator for tonight's meeting? John Rice has nominated Frank McGary to serve as moderator for tonight's meeting. Is there a second?
We already had a second.
Oh, who was the second?
Eileen.
Okay, sorry, Rob. And there is a second from Eileen Witkowski. So you will receive a question. We need, oh, any other discussion or nominations? Rainey Moran moved that nominations be closed. Second, is there a second to close nominations? Mike Krogel seconds that motion to close nominations. I didn't do that. Okay, okay. Okay, so we will, we will vote now to nominate Frank McGary. You will receive a polling question. Please answer accordingly. And then those in the, in the audience here, all those in favor of Frank McGary as moderator tonight, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? The motion passes in this auditorium. Now we're waiting, and the motion passes from the listening, from the zooming audience as well. Oh, no, it's still tallying. Still tallying. And it is complete. Frank McGary, you are nominated to be moderator for tonight's meeting.
All right, let us proceed. May we have a motion to adopt the proposed amendment to ordinance 10-005 regarding town budgets? A motion to approve. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second that. Charlie Overt, 10 Quodoc Road.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Amendment to ordinance 10-005 regarding town budgets.
Okay. It is opened up now for discussion, but we're going to start, everybody on Zoom, we're just going to start with the people on the floor here, and then we'll move to the Zoom audience just to keep some semblance of order.
Gentlemen here, yes. Yes, Mr. Ford.
Mr. Moran, I think you might...
Neither was I, so. Thank you. Mr. Ford, does that answer your questions? In the interest of full disclosure, it makes it easier to count the ballots. I could give you one advantage of combining. I would say if no one else wishes, if someone else wishes to speak, I'll...
I, I wouldn't mind taking, taking this up. From what I understand, the original intent separating to the Board of Finance. But if you look at the history, the history will show since that time that when the school budget might have been voted down and the town budget passed, that generally both budgets received some type of cuts. Because it's up to the Board of Finance to use their judgment as far as what is best suited to be cut. The, the purpose of combining them back together again is to bring more of a sense of unity. I'm working very closely with Melinda Smith, our superintendent, to share services, which brings cost savings to the town. And it's, it's really the hope that we will face fewer referendums if it's combined as one.
Mr. Ford?
It was submitted by the Board of Selectmen for your approval tonight. I'm sorry, what? Well, I had explained that. With voter approval. We can't do anything without voter approval.
The school gets less funding or the town gets less funding, but the reality is every time we go to referendum, it costs the town money. There's no benefit there, not for what we're, for what we could be saving in referendums. We could be, we're making cuts. It's just not helping. So we, we have talked about this, and it's been talked about by many people have come forward and said, we'd like to see it combined again. So that's kind of where, where we are with starting this process of combining it. And as Amy started to say, the town and the school have been working closely together to try to make the best out of your tax funding, the taxpayers' money, to try to minimize what we spend on different projects or administration, and try to work together to make the best of your, your taxpayer money, to make it go so that you're not getting taxes that are being increased, so you're not paying more money. And by combining the budgets, when you go and you vote it down and maybe you're not 100% sure what's in it, you're actually, the budgets will be intertwined in different areas. And when you vote no on the school, you're still voting no on the town. And the town will get cut whether, by cutting the school, if that makes sense. There's different parts of the budget that, that will be connected. Say, for instance, the other day, we talked about the rec department and the busing that they do for the summer busing is, I asked if they could work with the school to combine efforts. Why go out separately? If we can do it in a more cost-effective way, that's the goal. Does that help? The other thing is, this, this comes out of one pocketbook. You still have the right to vote no.
All right, someone else?
I appreciate, I appreciate your thoughts. Thank you for sharing.
Gentlemen up here would like to speak. Yes, sir.
Overall budget. It's part of the Town of Thompson's spending plan. Why are we saying, okay, well, this portion, we're going to vote separately than the capital improvement, than the public works? It's all one spending plan, okay? And not everybody that goes and votes no, by the way. Unfortunately, there are people who vote no on the school budget because it's lower than they want it to be. And we hear that every year, and we try to explain to them, please don't do that. Unfortunately, we don't have an option for, yes, I'm voting no because it's, it's too low, but we hear that from people. And so at the end of the day, if we want to move the town forward, this is the biggest step we could take in years, in my opinion, which is get rid of the infighting. And as far as Amy's talking about, you know, working together, we already have insurance, health insurance together. Few years back, we took on workman's comp. We took the town's workman's comp into the school's plan because it was saving the town money. We're talking about an HR person. We have our tech, the school's techs people will go down and work in the town hall to help them with technical issues, IT issues. There's so many things that we're already doing, and that's the way it's supposed to be. We're one town. We're not municipal. We're not Board of Ed. We're not Department of Public Works. We're one town. So the question is, is that what you want, or do you want to keep fighting every year? That's, that's really what this boils down to.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I believe that having the budget together... Thank you. I believe having the budget together will not help the situation at all because then just a single budget will be voted down, and the people will not understand why. I'd like to make a statement here. Let's see. Some people believe having two separate budgets being voted on causes division and animosity against the town people. I believe it brings the people together by having the voters understand where the problem on approval is. If, as in the past, one budget passes and the other one fails, it helps the people to understand where people want things cut or increased. And it's up to the Board of Finance to make the cuts appropriately. If one budget passes and the other one fails, I don't believe the Board of Finance should be touching the one that failed, the one that passed. I just think it's going to cause more trouble by having it together because people will not understand. I don't know if this is silly, but the people who are older than some, if they remember the Sims clothing ad, the thing that said, the ad said, "An educated consumer is our best customer." If the people understand where the money is going and what it's being spent on, they will have a very easy choice to make, and there will be no confusion. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Your comments, sir? Anyone else? Yes, up in the far corner there.
Didn't really understand exactly what was going on. I saw the ad in the Sharper's Guide, and I actually went back and read it a second time for myself because we had a divide here going from the town meeting, there's stuff being voted on, and we have the referendum. A lot of people didn't read that fully. So they came to the assumption that we were bringing this fully to referendum for everybody to vote upon. So I would actually like to make a motion right now to move this section to referendum because there's a lot of people right now that are not able to attend this meeting, and a lot of the older generation wouldn't have a clue what Zoom even is at this point. So I'd like to make a motion to actually move these three questions over to a referendum so we have a fair chance for everybody in our town to vote yes or no.
There is a mechanism for citizens to bring articles to referendum. This isn't one of the possibilities. You'd have to get up a petition to accomplish that. I understand your confusion, and your intention is well-meaning. However, we can't accommodate it at this meeting. Yes, sir.
Robert Mann, 15 Meadow Drive. This, many, many years, this has been discussed to bring the two budgets together when the referendum comes. I've had the same concerns as some other people where I like them separated for the reason not, not to make a divide in the town, but... So the Board of Finance had an idea of which direction that the presidents wanted them to go with the budget, whether they wanted the school reduced, the town reduced. I do understand that sometimes when one, one doesn't pass, that the other one is also reduced just because they try to minimize the effects on the whole thing. But I think the majority of the time, the majority of the reductions are made on the side that fails, opposed to the side that doesn't pass. My fear with this going together is that, that it might actually hurt the side, the town side also because if people are just going to go with vote no, then the reductions are going to have to be made in both places. And then the Board of Finance is going to have to make a determination of, you know, how much to reduce and where. That's, that's my main, my main concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Anyone else?
Frank, I'm right over there in the corner.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'd like to have it clarified as to whether there are separate things that will be voted on within this budget ordinance. I see three... I see three different items, and is it meant to be voted on as all one?
No, separately, Sally.
The three resolved within this...
Three questions, each to be voted separately.
Within ordinance number 10005.
No, this one, that's one ordinance. You have three items.
Then I would like to have clarified, please, that the third, be it further resolved, the third paragraph, how is that different from the current situation with...
You're talking about item three on the warrant?
She's looking specifically at the budget ordinance.
Ordinance. There are three paragraphs, resolve, resolved, and be it further resolved. The third one, I'd like to know, is there in fact something being changed, where it says, "Regardless of amount shall be exempt." Is the language different presently?
Well, as in the standard, Sally, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. St. Ange, this motion would strike out the paragraph that reads, "Resolved, the town of Thompson shall be required to separate the Board of Education and town government budget whenever the combined annual budget is sent to a referendum for approval."
Correct. I realize we're talking about combining the budget, but isn't there, aren't there other aspects in here?
That's all that's in that budget, in that ordinance. The only thing is what's stricken on that second page.
So, currently, you are able to, regardless of amount shall be exempt, blah, blah, blah. That's the current language. Okay. Very good. So then, I would like to speak to the matter of combining. And will we have a further opportunity to speak and have discussion on the other two ordinances?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Then I'll move right along. Let's see. Let me get to my notes. One of the matters in terms of combining, my understanding, and there may be some folks here that would be that much older, since I lived away for so long. I recall 60 years ago, only because my parents were very involved, 50 years ago, that the budgets were separate then. I wasn't aware of them being combined and then becoming separate again. But one of the major rationales and the mechanics of government for them being separate is because the Board of Education is elected, the Board of Selectmen are elected. As a rule, it is a matter that keeps it clean, accountable, and transparent. When you have any elected body, that that budget be exposed, discussed, and submitted for consideration by the electors, because that body that was elected is accountable to us. So when you combine them, you're essentially disenfranchising the voters from holding the people that were, that you elected and that put those budgets together. So it's a matter of direct responsibility. Now, to take this a step further, to consider a scenario, the only thing that might make it reasonable is if, and I don't think you could do this by law, but I'm trying to give an illustration, is if the Board of Selectmen took over the entire responsibility for both budgets, and the Board of Selectmen actually appointed the members of the Board of Education. But as long as we directly elect the members of the Board of Education, and they form their budget, which is the biggest budget in town, then they need to remain directly accountable and leave that budget as transparent as possible. And to the contrary, I would say that you will suppress, you will exasperate, and you will have less participation in the town if you combine them. There's no reason why people cannot discuss. They can argue. You can have heated arguments, and that's fine. That's a good, healthy thing. But if you suggest you want to centralize the power, then you are killing the sense of a healthy town. The...
Frank, can I just address that, please?
Sally, would you yield for a moment? We want someone to address that.
I just want to clarify that these budgets are not being developed together. They will still be developed separately.
Correct.
The school will develop theirs, the town will develop theirs, and then when we go out to referendum, it will be a one yes or no vote. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Mm-hmm. I appreciate that, Suzanne. And the, my sense is, this is my, obviously, my personal opinion, is the real reason that this is being done is that people, whether it's the Board of Selectmen, Board of Education, some other folks, they're tired of being, of the pushback. That is, when we vote no, and we've done that several times, and we go back, some people get exasperated. They don't like, essentially, the peasants, the electors, saying no. And the fact is, they're not listening to us, because they wouldn't have to go back if they would in fact decrease budgets, which all of us who have delved into them know that there is room to do that. I'm not convinced it's about efficient use of money, because here's one thing. You say that, well, you will cut down in the cost of having repeated referendums, which might cost approximately $7,000 or $8,000 each time. I dare say that if we had, say, three referendums, sometimes it's been four, and we ended up having, say, spending around $20,000 or more in referendums. But if there is less transparency, it is more than likely there is going to be far more than $20,000 put in there and less accountability if we do not leave them separate and we have good discussions and arguments and challenges. $20,000 is not much when you have budgets of this magnitude. It is a lot of money. It certainly is a lot of money to me. But if you go along year after year after year with a combined budget, it's going to add up. And there's, human nature being what it is, and people that spend a lot of time in government, and some of the people on the various boards or that have a lot of influence in town have been doing this a long time, and it becomes easier and easier to obscure what the actual costs are and how they add up cumulatively. Now, I did, didn't have a whole lot of time, but I noticed Woodstock still votes separate budgets. Putnam has town, library, and school budgets that they vote on. Now, in our town, the Board of Trustees of the library, librarian form a budget that then is combined, in a sense, with the town budget. And it may well have been decades ago that that was also separate, and that's probably a matter of debate. Killingley remains separate. Pomfort is the only nearby town, I didn't call any of the further towns, that is combined. And I didn't ask why, but the immediate answer was, because if one doesn't pass, then they both fail. And it was like a sense of, oh, it's such a bother, and so forth. So, but there's a couple other points here I'd like to make. Back to my point. I think we, it would be a sad day when we think that we have to combine, in a small town, two budgets in order to move things along and don't hasten things of this nature. The whole purpose of town government is that you are to know one another, you're to be accountable, and you have these debates. All of your, the people that are on the Board of Ed, the selectmen's, your fellow Thompson taxpayers deserve better than this than just saying, "We're going to lump it together and move on," because you all haven't been cooperating with us. There needs to be a reasoned rationale based on investigation of the consequences of doing this, and that needs to be advertised, which, that goes back to the gentleman back in the corner, who I agree, I think it would be a very worthwhile thing to put this on a referendum. And I think it'd be good to look at the legal procedure for doing that and trying to get a hustle on that and get that done, because it is a shame, because a lot of people cannot use the Zoom and the computer setup. And again, we are essentially disenfranchising people from participating in something which is very significant. But you never want to consolidate power, especially in a town like this. It's just not a healthy thing to do. And it's, someone asked, well, who promoted this? And is it, was it strictly people within the town that have tired of having a couple of repeated referendums? And/or is it go beyond that? Is this a move that comes out of the council of municipal governments? Or does it come down from the NEA or the state edu... Where's this coming from? Is it really native to Thompson? Or is it more top-down than that? And I think that would be good to disclose that. But again, it comes back to elected bodies need to be accountable for their budgets. And I think that is a, an element of mechanics of government that we should not dismiss. They need to be openly accountable, and their budgets need to be presented. If we're going to elect them, you know, we don't elect people that sit on the conservation committee or this and that, but we do elect the board of that...
Sally, please, please direct your remarks to this item particularly, if you would, please.
Okay.
Can I say point of order?
So the...
We have a point of order?
I'm just saying, point of order. We need to address it to, solely to the ordinance that we are discussing.
Yes, precisely. Perhaps you don't see the connection?
And we do have 100 other people.
This has to do with the accountability, the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen. And if you have elected bodies that have budgets, that's why they are separate.
And they are going to remain separate. It's just the vote that is changing.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes, and that's, that's the point that a number of us here are concerned about, that I'm concerned about.
When you vote, and you vote down one side, you vote down the other side. The vote does not pass, and that's why we go back out to referendum. The budgets will be put together separately.
Oh, we all understand that. I do agree. I imagine that's a matter of law and regulation. No one is thinking that. But we, I would like to see them remain separate budgets to vote on in a referendum.
Okay.
That's what's critical, in my view, in terms of the operation, the mechanics of government, because they're two elected bodies. The Board of Selectmen, responsible for the town budget, and now we have wrapped the library budget into that, and then the Board of Ed having their separate budget, because we elect, but I hear what you're saying, Suzanne.
Thank you. Thank you, Sally. Appreciate your remarks. Anyone else on this? All right. Do I have someone's hand up?
Justin Young, 12 Fairway Drive, here in North Rosedale. Couple of items that I'd like to speak to. I've lived in town two years, three years now, so not as long as some of you. I do come from a city where we have absolutely minimal control over our budget besides voting for a mayor or a councilman or something like that. So I find the process here in Thompson very open and transparent. I think a lot of the issues that happen here are that it is, nobody participates in the, or I don't want to say nobody, let me take that back. There are very few people who participate in the budget process until it goes to referendum. If you want to know how much the school is spending, go look at the 90-something-page budget that they submit as part of their, as part of their annual budget workshops that they do. If you want to look at what the Board of Selectmen is submitting, you want to know how much Rich Benoit gets paid, go look at Amy's budget. You want to know how much Melinda or a second-grade teacher at the school gets paid, go look at the school budget. It is all right there. So there's a whole level of transparency, and I know there's a lot of people here tonight who are saying that there's no transparency. There is a ton of transparency. I've been through all of those budgets for the last two years, and I see how much the teachers get paid. And honestly, they're not getting paid what some teachers are getting paid in neighboring towns. We're lucky that those teachers, this superintendent, is staying with us.
Mr. Young, please direct your remarks toward this particular item on the wall.
Okay. Sorry. So there was a couple other things that somebody said that this ordinance change would do, that it would divide the town, or that it would divide the town more. Again, I go back to my transparency statement, that from a transparency perspective, it's as transparent as it could possibly be. Somebody said that their assessment went up. My assessment went up too, a sizable amount, but guess what? If I decide to sell my house tomorrow, I can sell it for that amount. So I get the benefit from the assessment going up as well. Let me see, I got two more items on here. Nope, that was it. So that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, gentleman up here? Do you have your hand up, sir?
Hi, my name is Pete Fosha, 574 Fabian Road. I understand you're wanting to combine the budgets to make the voting easier. My concern is, will the voters, in a timely manner, be informed of what each individual budget will be, so that they can look at the items themselves, even though when they go to vote, there is one, yes or no?
Would anyone address Mr. Fosha?
I, could I address that? I'd just like to say, next Thursday, March 4th, we'll be doing the presentation on all the budgets, on both budgets, school and town. There'll also be multiple meetings with the Board of Finance, where you'll be able to sit in and see what's going on and what the budgets are. I believe they're published as well, after they've been presented, so you will have access to them. If you need a copy, just call my office, because I'll print one off for you. That's the selectmen's office.
But will it be on the ballot itself?
The budgets themselves won't be on the ballot. The total amount, oh, okay, the total amount is on the ballot.
The amount will be on the ballot.
The ballot, the budgets are too long to put on the ballot?
I understand.
Okay.
But even, but this amount is for the school.
I believe it is. We've been trying to... Right.
You're just going to leave it so...
Are they listed separate? That's a good question. I don't have that answer. So the question is, will the, if we combine the budgets, will the schools still have their number and the towns still have their number, or will it be one total number?
It'll be one total number.
On the ballot.
My understanding is one total number.
Yeah. But, but the budgets will be available, so you can see the separate numbers at any time.
Someone else? Yeah, Mr. Prissette?
That's exactly what we're trying to get away from, is the word town and school. All of town of Thompson.
And, but that's, that's really our emphasis here. You know, as far as where this comes from, it comes from the people that I talk to in this town. I don't even know half of the references that were being made as to where it possibly could be coming from. You know, this is a small town, and the people that are elected to volunteer and even the, you know, the paid electorates, we do this because we love this town. You know, we don't do it for any other reason. Trust me, there's a lot of things I could be doing with the thousands of hours I spend volunteering, but I do it because I love the town, and so does everybody else that volunteers in this town. And the idea that it's getting ripped apart every year because people want to say things like, you know, there's not transparency, there is more transparency in our budgets than, than anything for years. We had a member of our Board of Finance, Larry Groh, he's been, you know, involved in town for years. And when he looked at our budget over the last three or four years, he couldn't believe the amount of information we were giving him as a school. We do countless budget workshops that nobody shows up to, and then they say, "Oh, wait a minute, where did the budget come from?" I mean, we are, again, as transparent as it can possibly be. And this isn't going to change that, by the way. As they said, when we do a budget presentation next week, there's going to be, the Board of Education budget is going to get presented to the, to the Board of Finance, and then the municipal budget is going to get submitted, and then the Board of Finance is going to work on both budgets, open in all kinds of openness meetings, whether it's Zoom, whether they do, I hope they do some in-person stuff. This, the transparency level, I don't know how it could be beat, okay? And when I hear that it's not transparent, or somebody's trying to hide something, I do take it personally, because I see what we do. I see where all these numbers are out there for people to see if they want to see them. So there's a lot of reasons why somebody could make up in their head that they want to vote no, but the idea that we're not transparent is absolutely not a valid reason.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Landry.
Yes, Mr. Landry.
I have some concerns. I kind of feel like if it's not broke, why fix it? We didn't get to vote on the budget last year as citizens. And I'm seeing a diminut of democracy in America. And I'm very concerned. And I think it's a good thing to vote on two separate budgets. So the Board of Finance does have some indicators, and this is why this was put in in the first place, of how they should carry on. Now, I have a question. How about if we say it's proportional? Let's, let's use numbers. We'll say 75% of the money goes to the school, 25% goes to the town. When it's voted down, are we going to cut along those proportion lines? I think that's how we should if we're going to go this route.
Well, that's not the way it's done now, I can tell you that.
No, I know that, but no, because I remember this town usually takes a beating. We can go back to a certain selectman and I could tell you what the numbers were for the three times it failed before it passed in September. But it's neither here nor there, I guess. I just have some concerns that people are going to vote this down even worse than they have been in the past. And we're going to be in a bigger mess than we are now.
Could be. Anyone else?
Time will tell.
Frank. Mr. Bosa Lee.
Ken Bosa Lee, Board of Selectmen.
Gentlemen, may we have your attention?
The Board of Selectmen and the Board of Ed start their budget process in January and present to the Board of Finance at a public hearing in March, budgets that meet the needs of the town government and the education of our children. The Board of Finance then reviews and adjusts the budget over several weeks until it's presented at the annual town meeting in May. I believe that it was separated out in 1997, which was the Thompson Taxpayers Association, if I remember correctly. That they separated it out. This change allowed the taxpayers to express their feelings on the budget. Over the years, the separated budget has passed. Other times, one or both budgets have failed. The results from the budget would indicate where the Board of Finance needs to make adjustments before sending it back out to referendum. Our residents look at the budget and determine what they feel is appropriate and vote accordingly. If we are to continue the, the budgets with, if we are to combine the budget with this ordinance, ordinance this evening, we need to have a plan in place where the voters can indicate on the ballot why they voted against the budget. We as town leaders need this information so we understand why the budget has failed. If this is not possible, we stay as we are. Some feedback is better than none. In a perfect world, all of our budgets would pass on the first referendum.
Thank you, Ken.
Frank, Tracy just told me that the Zoom attendees are feeling neglected. They haven't been able to speak. So at this time, maybe we can at least let some of them speak.
Fine. Who wishes to speak?
Okay, we got Kathleen Herbert. Has her hand raised? Kathleen, would you like to say something?
Yes, please. All right.
Say your name, name and address, please.
Kathleen Herbert, 122 Wilsonville Road. As you all know, there's 169 towns in Connecticut. Only 25% of them, or 43 towns, have a bifurcated budget or split budget as we do. When we talk about voting on unifying the budget, we're talking about a budget that takes the school and treats it as a line item on a single budget. You know, the town budget, you say you're voting on the town. Well, the town budget incorporates the library, which is also an elected body. It covers the town, the debt coverage and capital spending. And you unite all of those and we vote on those as town. So they're commingled as the town. The school alone is the actual expenses of the school. The process of developing, and I know many, some members of Sean has said this too, the process of the budget, development of the budget remains the same. We're going to conduct our workshops. They're open to pub, to the public. We're going to present the budget to the Board of Finance separately, a separate budget. It'll be posted on the school website for anybody's, you know, for anybody's perusal. There'll be discussion at the Board of Finance on the school's budget. And when you vote, it will be, you know, we, it will be the Town of Thompson spending. My concern is, having been involved in town politics over the last 15 years or so, is that I believe that because we separate these two big budgets, it becomes an us versus them mentality. And this mentality I've seen in the last several years has been growing. It becomes as, as one of the speakers said tonight, they, you know, they keeps harping on the fact that the school has got the money, the school is hiding money. And this is not the case. And it always becomes, well, whichever budget fails, they'll know where to take the money from. Everybody, it's everybody's responsibility. And I know I've been on the board for almost eight years now. And I know that every year we put forward a responsible budget. We put forward only what we need for that, that budget's year. Because we go through our budgets very carefully. And every year, the Board of Finance reviews our budgets with what they feel that the town can afford. And that's what's presented to the voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Herbert. Who's, who's next?
We have Bill Warner.
Hello, this is Bill Warner from Lowell Davis Road. First, I apologize if I repeat anything that's already been said. But a lot of what was said on the floor, we couldn't hear in the Zoom call. But basically, we only have one town budget. And until both budgets pass, we don't have a budget. But the government budget is put together by the Board of Selectmen with the Board of Finance. The education budget is put together by the Board of Education with the Board of Finance as well. The budgets were separated back in 97 to inform the citizens of Thompson what the different budgets were for the town as well as the school. And to allow them to vote for each one of them independently, knowing that until both of them pass, neither one would actually be a pass. But it was also to allow the, the Board of Selectmen, the school board, as well as the Board of Finance, what the voters thought of those two budgets. Before that, we only had one budget and you voted down. It, it could be you didn't like something in the school budget or you didn't like something in the government budget. But you couldn't let the people that could make the changes know what was happening. Now, back in 97, this ordinance was overwhelmingly voted for by the citizens of Thompson by referendum. And it should go back to referendum for any changes. Now, Frank said you couldn't do it unless you, if you, unless you went out and got signatures. But I happen to know that if you check with the town attorney, a referendum can be called by the town meeting or just by the Board of Selectmen. So I would like to second the motion made earlier by the person that said he wanted to send these motions to referendum so that the whole town could vote for them.
All right. Gentlemen, present a motion to send this article to referendum. Would you repeat your name, please, sir? Mr. Ford, and is seconded by Mr. Warner of Lowell Davis Road?
Correct.
A motion to amend to send this article to referendum. I'll call for vote.
Frank?
Discussion?
It's a motion to amend. Is it discussable? I'll, I'll open it to discussion.
Frank?
I'm going to, I'm going to call the town attorney.
Okay. It's a motion to amend. Well, we'll find out, Sean.
But I know in the past, there have been times where the Board of Selectmen have put things directly to referendum by themselves, by their own vote. And there's also been times when it's been done by town meeting. So this is not something that's unique and the town attorney should verify.
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thanks. The, the town attorney is going to look into this matter and he's going to call us right back. I'll try to put him on speaker and have everybody be able to hear him when he does call us back. He didn't want to just give an answer without researching it quickly.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this amendment while we're waiting for town attorney? Point of order, Sally, what is it? All right, that would have to be voluntary, but we will ask the speakers if they would comply with that request. It's reasonable for sure. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Comply with the request of Justin Young, 12 Fairway Drive. Volunteer firefighter, firefighter two, East Thompson, volunteer firefighter. Also volunteer with my kid's school and help out with the PTO in the elementary school.
Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom wish to speak while we're waiting for an opinion from the town attorney? Mrs. St. Anne, just see anyone waiting for the floor?
Christopher, Christopher Nelson has his hand up.
Mr. Nelson, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. I just have a question. My address is 210A Wilsonville Road. You were talking about the cost of, if the, if the vote does not go through when the, when the budgets are split. If the budgets are combined and the vote doesn't go through, is there any cost savings?
I beg your pardon?
In other words, if the, when the budgets are separated, town and school, and if, say, one of them does not go through, you have to go up back out for a revote? And you say that there's a large expense? If the, the two budgets are combined into one budget and it goes out for a vote and the town declines that, or says no to that amount, is there a savings? Where, in other words, where they have to go back out for a revote? For another referendum?
The cost of a referendum is about $5,000.
Right, but if, if the, if the two, if the combined budget is not okayed.
Yes.
It goes out for another referendum. Is there a savings versus the two budgets being separated?
I don't think there's a saving referendum. The referendum where they have one question or, or the question divided into two parts. I stand corrected, but that's my, my feeling, speaking as registrar voters.
Anyone else? Anyone else want the floor? We're still waiting for town attorney's opinion on whether this item should go out to referendum.
This is Charlie Ober. I've got my hand up on Zoom.
Is this Mr. Ober speaking?
Speaking, yes.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I've been a resident of town since 2005. And have to say that from my, from my point of view, from my observations, the system as it is now is flawed and it's causing us more harm than good. If we don't have representative government, if there, if the government and the Board of Finance is not perceived as transparent, then that's where we have to go to correct it. We've got people who will vote no just because they don't care at all. I, they, they would, in my opinion, they would rather see this turn into not the quiet corner, but the gravestone corner. It's just dying slowly around us. And if we don't get our, our focus correct and take care of the needs of our public schools and of our municipality. And to the point, I do volunteer. I'm on several boards and commissions. And we have to put forward a budget that has to be trimmed down. Every budget that we put forward this year has been no increase. It's, it's wrong of people to just say no, no, no. And I think that, that we need to correct this. And, you know, I, I personally hope that the lawyer comes back and says that it, that we need to move this forward now.
Who's next? Anybody have their hand up? Anybody wish to speak?
You can also just unmute yourself, just a reminder.
Okay.
Can I speak, please?
Who is it?
Rhonda Rooney.
Yes, Ms. Rooney.
Rhonda Rooney, Board of Finance. I just wanted to add that I've been on the board now for five years. And what I have seen happening as a result of the two split budgets is, you know, we go back and we try to make adjustments in the appropriate areas on the budgets that were rejected. So for example, if the school was rejected, then we would try to make those reductions even further on the school side. But what's happening is usually by, when we put that school budget, it's already been cut significantly. So that when it does go out to referendum, you know, we are hoping that it'll pass because it has been cut significantly. And then when it fails time after time, and it could be simply because people just want to vote no on it, we don't know, but that's their right to vote however they think fit. But a lot of times we'll go back and I know last year, we, we just couldn't take any money away from the school. So the money, you know, that balanced the budget to put it back out there came from fund balance, which is essentially, you know, the town's savings account that we put into the school budget so that it would balance and put back out there to get that vote passed. So, and, and I've also seen year after year, after we make these significant cuts, before it even goes out to referendum, there are teachers being fired. There are positions being taken away. So these cuts are significant before it even goes out there. So I just want people to understand that. It's not just, you know, we put the budget out there with a million dollar increase because that's what they want. And then, you know, if, if it gets failed, we have more. Oh, sorry. There's usually no more room to cut. And a lot of times it does come out and it has come out of fund balance in different areas. Also, I want people to consider that there is, we cannot cut the budget for the school any less than what it was the previous year. So even if we put out a flat budget. So even if we put out a flat budget and it would get rejected, which, I mean, after five years of this, I would have to say it probably would get rejected. There's nowhere else we can cut. So I just want to put that out there to the people that don't realize that. Just to take that in consideration, um, when they're vote, voting, whether they vote, you know, whether this decision is made to unify it to one vote at referendum, or it stays as two. I think it's important for people to realize that this is actually what's going on. Um, and the reality is nobody's gonna look at these budgets. Nobody goes to these meetings. And you know what? We can, we can talk about that until the cows come home. People just don't want to go. Um, they're too busy in their own lives to take the time out to do it. So they simply cast their vote at the, at the referendum, and that's how they, um, you know, put their, put their few cents in, if you will. So I just wanted to enlighten you guys with that information.
Thank you, Ms. Rooney. Mr. Saint Onge, do you have any answers?
Um, so, and Slater, I'm going to, uh, put you on the microphone. I can hear you. Can everybody else hear? Can they hear you on Zoom?
Uh, Amy, maybe you could repeat what's said.
Okay. The thought is that I can repeat what you say, so let's try this. Okay, could you? Um, okay, he's gonna jump on Zoom. Um, let me give you the passcode. It's the, um,
While that's taking place, let me introduce Attorney Kenneth Slater with the firm in Carroll and in Stage, and they are our town council.
Are you on the Zoom app? Or you can, you can either go to our town webpage?
Is it possible to speak?
And then there'll be, um, yeah, and then there'll be a quick, you'll be able to click on the link for the town meeting. It's right on the homepage.
Is it possible to ask a question?
Who wants the floor?
Oh. Yes, at this, at this time, Frank, we're waiting for the attorney to come on to Zoom, so.
I think someone wants to speak.
Yeah, um, is it?
Michael Edmonds, 21 Fairway Drive?
Go ahead, Mr. Evans, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, uh, thank you very much. I have a question. Uh, if we go to a single vote, are the, are the individual budgets protected, or can they each borrow from the other?
It's my understanding, Mr. Evans, that the Board of Finance has the authority to adjust the budgets either side until both pass.
So, one, once the, it's passed at the referendum, then the town can't borrow from the school, nor can the school borrow from the town?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Yes, Sean? Funds can be moved from department to department. Yes. Up, up to certain limits, the Board of Finance has that authority. Correct.
Could you repeat the audience's question, please?
Who has the floor?
Okay. Are you? Oh, the passcode is zero two eight. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Young, you wish the floor?
Steven, just asked if we could repeat the ordinance, um, but I had one question, Frank, and that's, where are we? Are we in a motion to amend right now, or are we in a motion to accept?
We're in a motion to amend.
Thank you.
And the motion to amend would send this item to referendum. That's where we are. We're waiting for town attorney to give us yes or no on that question.
Mr. Moderator, may I have the floor?
Who speaks?
Uh, the town attorney, Ken Slater.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir, Attorney Slater, go ahead.
Pleased to be with you. Uh, sorry it took a moment to, uh, first selectman called me, and I thought I knew the question, but I would never want to answer that one off the top of my head. Um, my advice to the moderator is to call the motion out of order. Uh, section seven dash seven of the Connecticut General Statutes, which is the, uh, entitled Conduct of Meeting of Town, Society, and Other Municipal Corporations, uh, period, Vote by Ballot or Voting Machine. And in that statute, it states that, and I could share the screen, but I'll just read it. And if that makes sense, uh, then I won't need to share the screen, but I'll, I'll read it verbatim. This is in the middle of the statute. It says, "At such town meeting, the moderator shall be chosen from the last completed registry list of such town. Two hundred or more persons, or ten percent of the total number qualified to vote in the meeting of a town or other municipal corporation, whichever is less, may petition the clerk or secretary of such town or municipal corporation in writing at least twenty-four hours prior to any such meeting, requesting that any item or items on the call of such meeting be submitted to person, persons qualified to vote in such meeting, not less than seven nor more than fourteen days on a date set by a town meeting for vote by paper ballots or by a yes-no vote on voting machines." So, the, that statute allows, uh, the public, or mem, you know, the electors and voters to require that it be sent, but only upon a petition filed twenty-four hours in advance of this meeting. So by statute, I'd advise that a motion made during this meeting is too late and would be out of order.
I understand you to say this motion can be ruled out of order?
That is, that is my advice, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Counselor.
May I ask a question of the town attorney?
Surely.
Uh, Mr. Slater, is it the purview of the Board of Selectmen that they could, on their own initiative, send this to referendum?
Uh, no. Uh, the same statute provides that the, uh, and I'm reading again, this is verbatim. Uh, the selectmen of the town may, not less than five days prior to the date of any such meeting, on their own initiative, remove any item on the call of such meeting for submission to the voters in the manner provided by this section. And it goes on. So, in order for the selectmen to do something that's on a regular town meeting call, they would have had to do so five days in advance of the meeting for the public, provided you had the two hundred or ten percent, that would have to happen twenty-four hours before the meeting.
Okay, in that case, I suggest that he voted down because this was voted on by, uh, by referendum, by, to the citizens in town.
Corner.
Yes.
Would you please ask the floor?
I believe I did want to ask if I could please talk to the attorney, and I'm just responding to his response.
Is this Mr. William Warner speaking?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Warner, you have the floor.
Thank you. I would suggest to the people of the town meeting to vote against changing this res, uh, ordinance at a town meeting, because it was originally voted for to, by referendum in the citizens of, by the citizens of Thompson, at referendum by an overwhelming number. And if the politicians decide now they want to change it by town meeting without informing the people in the town, a lot of people are gonna be upset the next time they go to vote for a referendum.
Anyone else wish to speak on this question?
Yes, sir.
I'm against combining.
Hey, Fort, Fort Platte Road. I'd actually like to address this directly to the attorney, because obviously, um, legally, I wouldn't know how this stands. So you're saying at this point, because this was not done five days in advance, there's no recourse? Is it possible at any this point to petition this and get those two hundred votes and actually bring this back up after it has passed, or is there just no recourse? We have no choice if this goes through?
Well, there, there is no recourse to require this to go to a ballot. So the measure is before the town meeting to vote on. Uh, the policy of the town is set by this town meeting, so, uh, I can't say there's no recourse, because there can always be future action by the town meeting. Uh, but the, there, there isn't any other recourse with respect to the measure that is before the, the, the body right now.
If, if I was to get a petition put together at this point, can I bring this back to motion? Or is it just gone at this point?
There are rights to petition to, to have town meetings called. Uh, this particular measure, it is too late. So, uh, that, so there are opportunities to present other questions, call, uh, to petition for town meetings. Um, and there, so that exists, but the, so there is an opportunity, like as with any ordinance, uh, they can be changed, and there's procedures for that. But this particular motion, as it is presented tonight at the town meeting, there is no choice but to, uh, pass or not pass it during this town meeting. It cannot be, it cannot be deferred, and, and in my opinion, based on the, the language I was reading from the statute, uh, no matter how many people you sign it, it's too late. It has to be voted on at, at the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Counselor.
May I speak, please?
Who is it speaking?
Bill Warner.
Go ahead, Mr. Warner.
So, basically, what we can do is if this gets defeated or gets changed at the meeting tonight, we can then go and get petitions tomorrow and call this for another referendum next month. Correct?
I understand. Go ahead, Mr. Slater.
Yes, i- in terms of the timing and what, where your meetings are and, and how long it would take, I can't speak to, uh, whether or not you'd get it, uh, uh, next month. But there is, there is procedures to, uh, to, to seek the call of a town meeting and, and put questions to a town meeting.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Yes. Charlie Ober, Ted Quodic Road.
Yes, Mr.
Attorney Slater. Am I correct that, uh, we are within our legal parameters to vote on this tonight? That, uh, nobody can say, hey, hey, you, you disobeyed the state law. If we vote on this, it has been published, it's been out for people, and we got a lot of people here tonight, both on Zoom and in, in the auditorium. So, is it legal for us to, to vote on this?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Anyone else? Are we ready to vote? Last call? Mr. Rosette, you have your hand up? We're voting on whether to change the, uh, ordinance to combine the budget. The amendment has been ruled out of order on advice of legal counsel. Are we ready to vote on this item? Ms. White?
Separate the budgets, that it would seem to be polite government procedure to reintroduce it by referendum again, as opposed to another method. It's, um, similar to trying to gracefully, I think, exit a parking space that you went into one way, and you want to leave it the same way in order not to cause any harm. And I think it would be very respectful and considerate of the entire population in town that can vote to go to referendum again, which would require to vote it down tonight.
Thank you, Ms. White. Anyone else? Ready to vote? I'm gonna ask for a show of hands. Rob Mann, would you do the counting for us, please? We need a show of hands here, and the people on Zoom will vote electronically. All those in favor here, please raise your hands, or those on Zoom, please indicate that you're in favor. Twelve in favor. All those opposed, raise your hand. Fourteen opposed here.
Fifty-five, yes, thirty-four, no. Is that, is that the final?
Did you incorporate the numbers from here?
Yeah, I can. No, I did not. So it was fifty-five, fifty, so it was fifty-five, yes, on Zoom, twelve, yes, in the auditorium, which brings it to sixty-seven. And then thirty-four votes no, and fourteen votes here in the audience, which would be forty-eight, so sixty-seven, yes, forty-eight, no.
I declare the motion passed. Next item, two B. We need a motion to adopt ordinance ten dash zero five four regarding referendum notices. Do we have a motion to that effect? The second, Mr. Young? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Changes the amount of time necessary for a referendum notice.
Frank, why don't we start on, um, the screen, leave the Zoom people first, first dibs?
Okay.
Linda Clemens?
Ms. Clemens?
Could you, if you speak, can you please, um, give us your video? Your hand is raised.
Ms. Clemens, you have the floor. Okay, anyone else? Anyone else on Zoom wish to? Ms. Clemens?
Would you repeat?
Anyone else wish?
Ms. Clemens has to turn the volume down on her computer.
Thank you.
Ms. Clemens, are you with us?
I'm here.
Good. You have the floor, Ms. Clemens.
Would you repeat?
The motion is to amend ordinance ten dash zero five four regarding notice required for referendums. The motion is on the floor to make the modification. Do you wish to speak to the question?
No.
I interpret that as an answer in the negative. So let us ask if anyone else wishes to speak. Someone have their hand up? No?
Ms. White? Sally White, three oh eight East Thompson Road.
The third paragraph, the third whereas.
Third paragraph of what, Sally?
Of the referendum notice for ten dash zero five four.
Okay.
Just using principles of logic, I'm curious. The second line, it says, um, publication of notice in a referendum may not necess, may be unnecessarily long and may prevent timely action by the town. It could also be read. Notice in a referendum may not be unnecessarily long and may not prevent timely action by the town. So, I would like to hear somebody make a case for this change using logic, using the very language that's in here.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I will say this isn't actually a change. This is a brand new audi, um, ordinance. Um, it's, it's, um, spawned from the fact that we have to go to referendum again for the school roof project. When bond council, when we went for bonding on the school roof project, which was approved on January fifteenth of last year, when we went for bonding, the bond council told us that the town had not given the, the taxpayers enough notice with the legal notice. The state statute, um, which is referenced in there, seven, seven dash nine C states that you have to have thirty- you have to have thirty days from the time the legal notice is published until we go to referendum. The town has not followed that in, in several instances. In this case, it means that we have to go back to referendum again on the school roof project, which was approved last year. So in doing this ordinance, it does give us some flexibility. Most towns, according to the state statute, if you have an ordinance like this, you can sidestep the thirty days and make it a lesser period of time between when the legal notice for referendum is published and when the referendum actually takes place. So it is a brand new ordinance.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Onge. Does that answer your question, Ms. White?
The, you could also put language in there that it, it may not be unnecessarily long and it may not prevent timely action.
Well, for the sake of expedience, may we accept the wording as it is?
I'd just like to see discussion that it.
Thank you.
Makes me uneasy when I don't see people.
We always appreciate stimulative discussion.
I, I will share, this is Amy St. Onge again, that our town attorney actually drafted that for us. In fact, he, he went through all of the ordinances that are being presented here tonight and gave us guidance, but that one in particular, he did draft for us.
Okay. Any other discussion on this motion? On Zoom, wish to discuss this motion?
Oh, Zoom.
Anyone?
I mean, I, I have something to say, but it has really nothing to do with this motion. I have a question.
Deal with this motion first.
Okay.
Rob Mann, do you, do you have your hand up?
Rob Mann, fifteen Meadow Drive. Yeah, um, I had some concerns with this at first and then I realized that it was, uh, some town errors that were made in the past, like the school roof, roof referendum having to come up again. I don't know why we can't just correct that and make sure that we give it the thirty days. The statute, obviously in the state says, it suggests thirty days. I did look this up because Amy actually sent me the information when I asked because I was concerned that it might go against, against the state statute and we're a town meeting in form of government and it's very important that we follow state statute. But it does give the option to the town, town body to make it a shorter amount of time. Personally, I'm not really sure why we'd want to make it a shorter amount of time because once it's posted in the paper, it gives people thirty days to prepare and, and, you know, schedule childcare or work or whatever they have to do to be able to make it to the referendum. And if we lower it to twenty-one, it's like taking a week and a half, two weeks away from these people to get prepared to go to the vote. On the other hand, if we give a shorter amount of time, some people might remember and not forget in thirty days. So it can, it can go both ways in, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, I'm sure. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to speak? Town clerk wishes the floor.
Now, just speak to Mr. Mann's comment. So the, the budget referendums are always the shortened time. So this is for other special projects or appropriations. So this really just brings the, in line with what we do for our budgets. Just so you know, that when we're talking about this, the referendum here about expenditures, it's outside that budget process because that is the shortened, when we do, it's, we have the three weeks. Just wanted to.
Thank you kindly. Anyone else? Are we ready to vote? Rob, will you do the counting? All those in favor here, please raise your hands. Those on Zoom, indicate accordingly.
The question's still getting put up on Zoom, Frank.
Eighteen here. Have all the Zoom votes been cast?
No, they're just starting now. Did we get the?
Eighteen here in favor. All those opposed here, please raise your hand. I don't want to offend them.
What would he do without you?
What was that again, Rob?
Eight. Eight votes here against.
It's still tallying. Tracy, is that sixty-one yes and nineteen no? Twenty-seven. Seventy-nine yes.
Seventy-nine yes, twenty-seven no. Did you get that, Frank?
What's your count?
Seventy-nine yes and twenty-seven no.
I declare the amendment, uh, the item adopted. All right, we'll move on to ordinance number ten dash zero one nine regarding firefighter tax abatement program. I'll give Mr. Young the honor of making the motion. Mr. Young? Great. Who wants a second? Rob Mann has a second.
Justin Young motioned and.
Rob Mann has a second. Any discussion? This would increase the firefighter tax abatement by five hundred dollars across the board. Ms. White? Recognize you anywhere, Sally.
Realizing it's five hundred dollar increase, then how much money? And perhaps it, it would be an approximation as to how many people would be involved in the program. And then given that it's a five hundred dollar increase, how will that be offset in the budget?
The second part of your question, how would it be offset? I expect it would be offset with tax revenues. And the amount? Is anyone here who's in a position to give us an indication of what the?
I believe we had approximated that it would be around sixteen thousand to twenty thousand, potentially, if, if everybody qualified, if certain people qualify total as a, as an increase.
Okay, so we're, all right, doing the math quickly in my head. That wasn't much.
It's, it's a, it's roughly going to be, the, the total amount, what we estimate is going to be fifty to sixty thousand dollars in abatement. Not abatement, yeah, abatement. You're welcome.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Tax abatement. Rob Mann has the floor.
I'm Rob Mann, fifteen Meadow Drive. I just want to say that volunteer firefighters in this town spend a lot of, of their own money, their own time and away from their families, training on weekends. Just, just firefighter alone, the time that they have to take to go take those classes just to be a volunteer that gets paid. I, I won't get, say get paid nothing because, yeah, they get a tax abatement for a thousand bucks or if this passes fifteen hundred. That is so minimal for what they do. If the fire departments didn't provide this town this service, the money that it would cost us as taxpayers is phenomenal. You have no idea what it would cost. If the fire truck is three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars. A fire truck's not any good if you don't have anybody to drive it, bring it to the fire and do the job the right way in a safe and proficient manner. I'm just, I'm completely in support of this. I couldn't, I, I couldn't possibly be against it. Thank you.
Gentleman here. Yes, sir.
And then we have, after Mr. Sharp, there are some people on Zoom too.
Okay.
Which I'll call up, Frank.
John Sharp, Floralev, also the chief of the community fire company here in Thompson. Sally, if I could answer your question as far as how many, at the community fire company, I have twelve members that are, that are qualifying for the tax abatement. Out of those, there are two that live out of town, so they will not be able to get that abatement. To go along with Mr. Mann's comments and concerns, he is right, the, the volunteers put in numerous hours. We answer the call twenty-four seven. I also have a full-time job. Most of the people know that I have my own business in the town of Thompson, as well as putting in numerous hours after, after work as well. So hopefully that answers some of the other questions. Thank you.
All right, anyone on Zoom? Who wants the floor?
Michael Edmonds.
Mr. Evans, you have the floor.
Yes, hi, I'd like to speak in support of this. The dedication that these people, men and women, give to this community is immeasurable. Frankly, folks, we're talking about coffee money here. Please support this item. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Herbert, you have the floor.
Steve Herbert, one twenty-two Wilsonville Road. Again, I just want to echo what so many speakers have said, this is a well-deserved benefit. It doesn't even approach giving them what they deserve. So I support it as well, I, I, I hope as almost all of us will. Thank you.
Are we just, are we going to just pretend that using Zoom is a suitable voting method?
Someone wish to speak?
I would really like to speak. This is James Clark from one thirteen Labby Road.
Mr. Clark, go ahead. You have the floor.
All right, all in all, you know, I'm okay for voting, but I myself don't even feel comfortable voting using Zoom. Is this cleared, like, number one, by the state? Has the attorney approved this? Are we capable and suitable to be using a Zoom meeting for voting? Because as far as I'm concerned, I can't even use Zoom meeting for my businesses. I have to use GoToMeeting, I have to use other protected systems than this. What, what is this?
I interpret.
It's going to be broken into.
As a point of order, Mr. Clark, and maybe I can address that to the selectmen.
Thank you.
Question of the legality of this format.
Well, the, the attorney was just in and he has cleared us to do hybrid meetings in this manner. There are several towns throughout Connecticut that have been using hybrid meetings.
Okay, but that's.
Good, we're proceeding on a legally sound footing.
But a hybrid meeting is a meeting, but making a vote to change amendments, I didn't, I wouldn't think that would be part of the same process here.
Well.
I mean, my, I got my wife here and she didn't even get to vote.
Opinion, Mr. Clark? Who else wants to speak? Mrs. Witkowski, you have your hand up?
Yes, I just want to clarify that this ordinance also affects the emerg, all emergency services. So the EMS as well as the, Steve Benoit is.
Fireman.
Emergency management as well and.
Fire marshal?
No. Okay, so I just want to make sure that we're including, and I could not believe in this ordinance anymore, and I think that is the least that we can do as a town for the individuals that volunteer their time to, to keep us safe.
Thank you. Who else wishes to speak?
I would wish to speak, please.
Rhonda Rooney. Rhonda Rooney.
Ms. Rooney, you have the floor.
Uh, yes, I accidentally put the thumbs up instead of the hand raise, so I apologize for that. But I just want to say with the topic that's at hand with the firefighters, I do support that as well, and I just want people to realize that not only are they volunteers and they're putting their time in, but they're also putting their lives on the line. You know, if one of our houses were burning down, they would be right in there. And so I just, I think it's well worth it. And like I said, like Rob Mann said, with regard to the Board of Finance, if we had to outsource the fire department, it would be a huge expense to the town.
Thank you, Ms. Rooney. Is anyone else wish to speak?
Frank, I was told that Jessica Bolti wanted.
Ms. Bolti?
I just wanted to make it a point of reference so that residents were also aware in regards to this, that those firefighters, when they do get their tax abatement, it's also, they also get hit on that abatement amount with their property tax assessments as, with their personal income tax assessments as well.
That's correct, Ms. Bolti. It's considered taxable income.
And if I remember correctly, there was a House bill that's being introduced this legislative session, if they wanted to notify their state representatives and Senate representatives to vote to approve that, to exempt that as well.
That would be a welcome change, I'm sure, to the fire personnel. Anyone else wish to speak on this one? Yes, sir.
Can I address that, Frank?
Beg pardon?
I'm sorry, can I address that? The, the, it's, it's now an exemption. We are working on making it an, um, an exemption.
It's currently an abatement.
It's currently abatement. We're working on making it an exemption so they are not taxed on it.
Thank you.
So that's in process.
Yes, sir.
Once you're paid directly or indirectly, aren't you now considered not a volunteer? Although I respect all firefighters and volunteer fighters, fighters and respect you and thank you for your service, but once you, whether paid directly or indirectly, I'm still considered a volunteer.
Well, that's a fascinating question of semantics. However, it doesn't pertain to this ordinance, sir. So I'm going to ask if there's any other comment on this ordinance. Yes, Mr. Young?
I don't feel like making any run that much tonight. So just so everyone knows, and I'm sure fellow firefighters here tonight will agree with me, we don't do it for the money. All right, a thousand dollars a year. I think last year I walked home after taxes, it was like eight hundred, give or take. That doesn't even cover the gas. That doesn't cover the insurance on the truck that gets me from my house to the fire department. That doesn't anywhere near get close to even covering some of those expenses. I don't do it for the money. I'm sure most of us don't do it for the money. We do it for the town. I, personally, one of my, you know, reasons that I do it is because I don't want to have to see us dump two, four, six, eight, ten million into having to pay for a paid call fire department or even a paid, uh, sorry, even paid call is going to be expensive. We just looked at a tanker, uh, to replace the tanker that we've got right now. It's almost a half a million dollars for a truck. And that's one truck. This town has several trucks because we have a wide response area. If we had to start paying a, a large amount of firefighters' full salaries to do this job, it's, it, the cost is astronomical. Now, we don't have enough volunteers in town as it is in, in our fire departments. There are nights where I'm responding by myself. There are nights where these guys are responding by themselves. I, I think fifteen hundred dollars, whether it passes or, you know, this is probably one that I'll abstain on, but whether it passes or not, we don't do it for the money. We do it to help you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Anyone else?
I'm going over to Ms. Iam Martino, but this is Amy St. Onge again. I did want to say that this is also a tool to recruit as be, as best as we can to get people to volunteer.
So I just want to address two things. The young man, oh, sorry, Valentine Iam Martino, twenty-four Quatic. The young man that was questioning if we could vote via Zoom, he should check out the executive order, I think in May of twenty twenty by the governor, that allowed that to happen for municipal meetings. Secondly, I, I can't say enough for the firemen in this, this, this town, all, all the locations. They are always there for people, generationally have been connected, you know, two, three, four, sometimes generations that have served all of the people in this town on a volunteer basis. And I, I have to say, within the last couple of weeks of having to use that for family members, they are always there. There is always somebody, and you know what's more reassuring? It's a familiar face a lot of the times. And I think for people that are ill, that are in accidents, that is a key thing for feeling comfortable. So I definitely vote in favor of this for the town.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Gentleman over here has the floor.
And I'm not seeing anybody on Zoom raising their hand.
Evan Fosher, seventy-four Riverside Drive. I'm the captain of the community fire company. I just want to say on behalf of all of us here tonight from the fire departments that we do appreciate your kind words, your support and everything that you as a town do for us. As Justin says, we don't do it for the money at all. There's been multiple times that I leave work to go on calls and if I leave work, I don't get paid. Unfortunately, that's a choice I do make, but I, like you said, we don't do it for the money. We do it for the love of doing it and we do it for the love of our town. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fosher. We appreciate your remarks. Anyone else on Zoom?
Anybody on Zoom, just a reminder, you can unmute yourself on your own, raise your hand if you need the raise the hand feature.
All looks like we're ready to vote. Rob, will you do the honors, please, again? All those in favor of amending this ordinance to increase the tax abatement to the firefighters, please raise your hands. Well, that's easy. That's like total attendance. Twenty-four. Twenty-eight? All those opposed? Raise your hands? None? You have a count, Mrs. St. Onge, on Zoom?
It's, wait, it's still, it's still tallying. Once it turns orange.
A cliffhanger.
Currently, the yeses. Currently, the yeses on Zoom are eighty-three. There are zero noes.
I declare the motion passed. Next item, number three in the warrant, to approve the proposed resolution regarding the issuance of bonds and notes to finance a school roof replacement. Anyone wish to? Rob, you have the motion? Mr. Brissette, you want the second? Okay. Any discussion on this one? Ms. Witkowski?
I would like to say the words, "by machine," well, by the machine struck here, so that we will have a chance, if we need to, to go to a hand count.
Sub, motion to amend this item to change the manner of voting to hand count, replacing machine count. Do we have a second on that motion? Motion is seconded. Do we have this gentleman's name?
What was your name again?
Mr. Shippey.
You have it? Okay.
Any discussion on the motion to amend?
Frank, can we explain it to the Zoom audience what's going on right now, just so they can understand? I don't know that they heard Eileen's complete motion.
The way the warrant is worded, the referendum to approve this school roofment, replacement funding calls for voting by voting machine, or what we call tabulators. And the motion to amend would change the manner of voting to paper ballots, which are counted by hand. Any discussion on the motion to amend? Sally? No option. Hand count, paper ballots. Substitution, not addition. Rob?
But you have a motion on the floor.
Yes, savings about four thousand dollars.
So for the Zoom audience, Rob Mann asked if there was a savings with going with paper ballots. Our moderator said yes, about four thousand dollars for this referendum.
Are we ready to vote on the motion to amend?
Is there anybody in the Zoom audience that had anything to comment on?
So didn't we have a motion and a second on the amendment to begin with, or did, or did we?
We have a motion and a second on the, on the item in the warrant.
Yes.
And now the motion is to amend the warrant as worded.
And I don't know that we needed the motion to amend it.
I, I do have a second. I got the second from Mr. Brissette. According to bond counsel, we do need this motion to amend if we're going to change the manner of voting.
Okay.
To be other than what's included in the warrant. That comes to us from bond counsel. We ready to vote on the amendment? Rob, would you do the honors, please? All those in favor of changing the manner of voting to paper ballots, please raise your hand. Twenty-five in favor. Any opposed? I don't see any votes in opposition. Zero in opposition. We have votes from the Zoom audience?
So it looks like sixty-six in favor, so that would be a total of ninety-one in favor and fifteen opposed.
Well, I declare the item and the warrant amended according to Mrs. Witkowski's proposal. Now we can discuss whether we should go to referendum for this. I don't think this is subject to discussion. This is by edict of the selectmen.
We, we adjourn to referendum at this point.
All right, so if there are no objections, I'll declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much for your attendance. It's been a spirited discussion. Most appreciated by all. Charlie, welcome.